Okay, I'd like to call the Monday, December 16th City of Eugene Planning Commission Meeting to Order. We have one agenda item for the evening, which is a presentation on Healthy Democracy. And we've not scheduled any public comment for the evening, but we're delighted to see so many people here. And so if you have any questions and you'd like to write them down on the cards that we have over there, we will, if we have time, try to answer them at the end. So if you have any questions you'd like to submit, we'd love to see them. So I'm going to turn it over to Teri Harding.
Thank you. My name's Teri Harding. I'm a Principal Planner with the City of Eugene with Long Range Planning, and I'm delighted to have Lynn Davis here today. I also want to introduce Sophie McGinley, who's a newer Assistant Planner with the city, and she's been helping coordinate this event. So I'm going to let her actually introduce Lynn, and then we'll do the presentation, and then Sophie and I will come back to the table for questions and answers and discussion.
My apologies to having my back to everyone. I'm Sophie McGinley. I'm an Assistant Planner here at the city. Thank you, everyone, for attending tonight's event, and I'm really excited to introduce Healthy Democracy and Lynn Davis. The City of Eugene is exploring ideas to expand public outreach and make it easier to include more community members in important conversations that affect everyone. Healthy Democracy is a nonpartisan, nonprofit organization based in Portland, and they're presenting about their citizen juries, diverse groups that are designed to be more representative of community demographics than traditional committees. Participants are compensated for their work reviewing complex issues for policy impacts on people across the community. This presentation is an opportunity to learn more about the organization and new opportunities to move forward and grow the effectiveness of equitable engagement. For example, as the city implements House Bill 2001 to enable middle housing types like duplexes and row houses. Lynn Davis has been with Healthy Democracy since 2016 and has led the organization's program management and process design for the past two years. He holds a Master's in Urban and Regional Planning from Portland State University.
Thanks so much, Sophie and Teri, and everybody. It's so nice to be here. And thanks so much for everyone for showing up. This is amazing. And everybody who might be watching on the livestream, I don't know, I just sent out a tweet, so you never know. And I know it was on Facebook Events and whatnot. This is really exciting to be here, and particularly because Healthy Democracy was actually born in Eugene. We're based in Portland right now, but it was started by a couple of U of O grads, and our first office was right here in downtown Eugene. So yeah, it's great to be back after many years. So this presentation necessarily starts off with a sort of problem statement. What is happening in our democracy that necessitates that we sort of think about new alternatives? And this is going to start big and very quickly go small. Here's a great graph that I love to show at the beginning of every one of these, which just shows over time. So this is on the axis on the bottom, it's age group, and you can see the 1995 U.S. line there in gray. And this is folks who rated on a global survey that democracy is a bad or very bad way to run a country. And you can see both in the U.S. and Europe, those lines have increased for every age group over the last 20 years. That should be concerning to everybody, whether we work in local or state or national government, or just private citizens. Now, why might that kind of thing be happening? Well, for one thing, we don't see ourselves, I think, in our democracies. And we know this kind of stuff exists at the national level. Here's the U.S. population, people of color, all across these three graphs. That's the U.S. population, that's people of color in Congress, and state legislators of color on the right. But we know that kind of disparity exists down to the most local level. Here's an interesting study from 2009 that shows rates of participation in a whole range of civic and political activities across income. And essentially, the higher income you have, the more likely you are to participate in civic and political activities. If you're white, you're much more likely. And part of that might be simply down to the fact that we don't, we won't request participation of people in civic and political activities. Ah, this is a different study from a little bit, a little bit long ago, but I don't have too much reason to suspect that it's changed. Hopefully, it has, though. You can see, actually, this is even worse than the previous graph in terms of our disparities in request to participate. So it's kind of a miracle that we participate at the, you know, relatively more equitable rates that we do. We all have some experience with civic and political participation at the local level, and some of the things that I'm sure everyone here is somewhat familiar with are that we have issues both in terms of the people at the table and the process in the room. In terms of the people, it's often the same individuals. Often, the demographics of the room are not reflective of the general public. It's often a self-selected or appointed group. The process is often inefficient or ineffective at dealing with complex or divisive issues, partly because it's often focused on debate rather than deliberation. And rarely do we provide a research basis for our public processes that I think is strong enough. I think we can do better. And here's our proposal for a new approach to democracy at the local level. So everything that we're proposing here, and there are lots of other solutions, it needs to be said, these are by far not the only ones, and there's lots of folks working on new innovations in local democracy. But we think they all need to have three main components. First, representation, both in terms of groups of people, but also in terms of individuals. There's sort of probably 99-plus percent of people who are, unlike the people, us in this room, myself very much included, who are very frequently at meetings or otherwise already involved. No doubt, folks who are already involved are, in many cases, the cornerstones of our of our local communities. But that doesn't mean that the other vast majority of folks don't deserve a chance at the place, at a place at the table, and don't have unique things to contribute. Also, resources. I think sometimes we don't put our money where our mouth is in terms of democratic engagement, and that we don't resource it as the fundamental basis of our, really, our societal decision-making, our decision-making infrastructure that we need to professionalize. We need to think of these processes as needing technical expertise, in the same way that we think of needing engineers to build roads. Well, that's the same thing as our, as our public processes need. We need to iterate and innovate, and not assume that what we've been doing in the past is necessarily what we should be doing in the future. And all of this needs to be on a foundation of reciprocal trust. Not trust in government, not rebuilding trust, but rather reciprocal trust. Because it's not just that trust should exist in two directions, it's that it must exist in two directions, or it doesn't exist at all. That we need processes that build trust among the civil service, in the ability for everyday citizens to make high-quality decisions. And we also need processes that build trust among we, the people, that our government is a methodology through which we can self-govern. So we need to have that as sort of our founding principle in terms of democratic engagement. So this is kind of the broad field that we work in, lottery and deliberation. Civic lottery is the, is the selection process, and deliberation is a wide range of processes that deal with the in-room experience. In terms of the people, we randomly select participants to get new voices in the room, send out a random mailing, often, but there are other methods. We then randomly but representatively stratify, select a group, a microcosm of the state or city or whatever region to be at the table. Those citizens are paid, and we think that selection process results in inherent legitimacy that comes into the room before the process even starts. In terms of the process itself, that we think needs to be highly deliberative, tightly structured, an iterative process that uses people's time respectfully, that's product-oriented, there's a very clear outcome at the end, and a place where that outcome is going, a pathway to influence, not something that's going to sit on a shelf, or otherwise not have a place to go necessarily, but will have a direct impact on policy. It needs to be transparent and public, every material, every meeting, every, all the selection process, everything. And we think that that process results in a high degree of efficiency while not sacrificing high-quality solutions that we hope can, can last for a long time. So these things are called a number of different names across the world. We use the term citizen's jury, but there's many different names for them. Citizen's assembly is often a little bit bigger version of basically the same thing. These can range in number from 20 people to 100-plus people. They can be a single panel or a more complex sort of multi-layered structure. They may have like sort of a general, general assembly that sets agendas, and then subcommittees that deal with specific area, sort of topic areas and come back. The process can be four days, which is what we've typically been using, to more permanent panels, which is sort of the trend across the world in terms of this kind of democratic innovation. The result can be everything from the sort of vision and agenda setting to voter information, I'll talk about that in a moment, to recommendations, which is the most common, recommendations to existing public bodies or elected officials, or, or actual decisions, or, you know, sending something directly to the voters. So that's sort of represented by this little graph here that says that ideas can come from electeds, from staff, from other citizens, and the results coming out of the process can go to any of those three groups as well. So the first example I wanted to mention is the Citizens Initiative Review, which is an Oregon creation. It, as I said, it started right here in Eugene, actually, where a couple of U of O grads saw the citizen's jury process that had been practiced since the 70s in Minnesota, and said, ah, this would be a great way to get better quality voter information around ballot measures. As we know, ballot measures tend to be very, very complicated, often a lot of money thrown at them, often a lot of ads on TV that may or may not necessarily be, be accurate, or showing the whole, the whole truth. Campaigns that are not necessarily interested in showing or explaining the unintended consequences. Sometimes both campaigns have an interest in not explaining these unintended consequences. So this is essentially the, the way the panel is selected. I should say that the result is, is a page of voter information, the Voters' Pamphlet. You may have seen it. It's been, been around since, well, 2008 was the first pilot. So randomly selected, we send out 10,000 letters across the state. We get those names from the voter list. In this case, we're dealing with registered voters, that's the audience, so that's what we select from. The selection process is done by an independent group in a public setting, and they select a panel of 20 to 24. Those are representative, they're representative of the state on seven different factors, which is quite a lot, that's a lot of variables to sort of mix and match. But geographic location, we do that by, by congressional district, age, race and ethnicity, gender, political party affiliation, educational attainment, and voting frequency, which is sort of the most interesting one. That's to ensure that there are folks in the sample who are, who may not be very frequent participants in the political process right now. So this is kind of the process in general. It's four days. And as with all of these processes, the basis is on evidence. And the whole first two days, really, is all about evidence gathering. So they listen to a bunch of different experts, they question both of the pro and con campaigns, and then on day three, they start to deliberate and take apart that information, suss out, you know, what, what can be verifiable facts, and what is maybe just sort of political, political, you know, mumbo jumbo, and identify the most salient info as well for, for their fellow voters to know. And then write a statement that is hopefully readable, because it's written by voters for voters, and contains accurate information. And then that's printed in the, in the Voters' Pamphlet. This is what one looks like. You might have seen, this is Measure 97 from 2016. So the second example I wanted to offer is our most recent sort of expansion of the CIR model, and the citizen, into sort of a traditional citizen's jury format, that is, into a recommendation-giving format. So this was done just a few weeks ago for the City of Milwaukee, on a question that was very sticky for them, which was how much should their city council be paid, city councilors and the mayor, how much should they be paid? And obviously, that's a question that was tricky for electeds and staff to sort of wrestle with, and we thought this would be a perfect opportunity to pilot a sort of new form of, of very efficient citizen's jury. This is now on a very specific question. So this is not necessarily the same, neither of these is exactly the same as what might happen here in Eugene. That would be a first-time kind of, kind of process, but this is, these are both definitely part of the process. So this is how that was laid out. In that case, 5,000 letters sent to random addresses this time, because we wanted to get folks who were six-stage, 16 and up, not necessarily registered voters. Selection process was again done in public, and we selected a panel of 20 on the same factors, except renter and homeowner status instead of voting frequency. And this is sort of the, the four parts of this process. Starts out with evidence again, that's the whole first two days, basically, listen to a bunch of experts, question them, dealt with the evidence, and, and then started to deliberate, made criteria for what their final decision will be based on, compiled all potential recommendations, and then you can see where this is going, reviewed the evidence, applied the, the criteria and the evidence to these different alternatives they had identified, and then ranked them, prioritized them, took a day, really, to do that, and came out with a recommendation at the end for the city council. So I wanted to give just a couple of other examples here as well. Here's an example in Australia that I thought would be interesting. This is one of our sort of sister organizations in Australia. The topic of this one, this was in a small town, about 30,000 people, a kind of a tourist community on the, on the coast of, eastern coast of Australia. The topic was local government decision-making processes. So sort of decision-making about decision-making. They had actually done several other of these panels around infrastructure issues over time, and they sort of realized that they needed to have a broader discussion about how to integrate this kind of thing, or some other kinds of reforms into the council's decision-making process. So that's what this was about. It happened over the course of six sessions with 18 randomly selected participants. The interesting thing about this one is the integration of stakeholder groups and, and elected council members into the process. They were actually, they, each of those groups had special work sessions on their own, and then all three of those groups came together for a couple of extra work sessions at the end, and produced a kind of combined report. So it had quite a lot of strength going into, you know, approval by council, because they had been involved, and, and these sort of key stakeholders had also been involved. But you can see the core of this kind of decision-making, and, and evidence gathering, a lot of, you know, time with experts and that kind of thing, happened with randomly selected citizens. So they heard from experts, produced recommendations, which included all kinds of stuff, dozen, a couple dozen different recommendations with, with specific action items related to performance reviews for council, and use of plain language in documents, incentives for community participation, and other things. Here's another example. These are both from this year. This was in Vancouver, B.C. Vancouver, B.C. has done a number of really interesting things related to this in the past. This one was actually done by an American organization called the Jefferson Center, based in St. Paul, Minnesota. Our, they're, we're kind of the, the derivative of them. We got our process from them back in the mid-2000s. The topic in this case was alternatives for a new grade-separated arterial road that was going to go either above or below a railroad track in a certain area to connect, I think, east Vancouver to downtown. This was preceded by a couple of years, at least, of traditional stakeholder and public engagement work, and then the council identified that really they needed something else, that that wasn't, that wasn't doing it. They needed some sort of, you know, it's a very complex project, lots of values, you know, and, and, you know, sort of different folks in the neighborhood and the business community really had very strong opinions about this project. And so they wanted to convene a citizen's jury to sort of make a final recommendation. So they convened 37 randomly selected citizens. This went a little bit longer, eight, eight full-day sessions, including two public workshops with about 175 total members of the outside public, and one site tour, and a whole bunch of experts, folks from, I think, five different city departments. It was a huge project, really. But the, the sort of guidelines for it were fairly well-defined in advance. I mean, it was a fairly traditional sort of alternatives analysis in a planning context. Interestingly, the, one of the factors, both of these included factors like age and gender and race and ethnicity and that kind of thing, but also, in this case, included a certain number of local residents, a certain number of local business owners, and a certain number of residents who were not from that local area, who were from the broader city of Vancouver, because other people would be using this arterial street. So, so they're recognizing sort of the broad city impact, but also the local impact. Panel considered a whole bunch of things, including values and sort of weighing values of these different groups, technical information, a whole lot of very, very intense technical info in this case, and, and then some key factors, a list of about half a dozen key factors that have been identified by the previous stakeholder and, and public engagement process. And actually, the, the panel finished its work, I think, in April, maybe, or May, and the council came out with a decision on, on the final route choice in October, and ended up choosing the second-choice alternative from this group, actually, due to some other factors. So that's, that's another example. Ah, this is my favorite part. Yeah, but. Here are the critiques, or some of them, anyway. Oh, no. Oh, let's see, how do I get, how do I get it back? We were just getting to the good stuff. Here, is it here?
Yeah, go down. Go down to the USB right there.
Okay, thanks. Perfect. All right. It doesn't want me to criticize it, I guess. No, 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 no. Anyone who wants a copy of this presentation, by the way, just, just let me know. I'm happy to, happy to talk to anyone offline as well, and also give copies of all our materials. All right. Yeah, but. Random people aren't experts. Well, I've already talked about random and representative groups having some inherent initial legitimacy that other groups, we think, don't necessarily have. But also, the basis of every one of these citizen's juries is evidence. Expert Q and A, that's the whole first half of any of these processes, sometimes even much more than that. However, all expertise needs interpretation in order to be used to make decisions. The question is only who is making that interpretation? It's not whether an interpretation is being made. And finally, and I'll touch on this a little bit later, that there is a proven track record of these kind of groups being able to make really high-quality decisions with a good quality process. What you put in is what you get out, sort of. This seems expensive. The average CIR is about $60,000 to $80,000. That's a lot for four days. However, it's nothing compared to, you know, the, the general election infrastructure. And we think that in, in general, these kind of processes, which can be sometimes less than that, sometimes more than that, depending on the duration and other costs, are both an investment in permanent civic infrastructure, and also can be the same cost as traditional methods, but with, we hope, a higher payoff. The benefits go beyond these recommendations as well, both for the panelists in the room and a broader culture of trust in the city, which is a little bit hard to measure. We can measure sort of the quality and, you know, sort of longevity of the outcomes, but we can't necessarily measure the sort of change of political culture as, as easily. we can't necessarily measure the sort of change of political culture as easily. Consider the quality of decisions as well. I just mentioned that, long-term savings due to legitimacy and strong process. Isn't this equality, though, not equity necessarily? True, true. It is. It's an equality-based process. But let's at least start with a baseline of equality. That's the most easily defensible across the board often, and many of our equality-based processes don't even achieve equity. So let's at least start with equality, and then we can build from there. We can justify some other basis for selection if we need to. Yeah, as it says in the next section here, when we add an equity lens. For example, one idea is to use K through 12 demographics for future planning. This is the future of the city. Okay, let's use that demographic pool, except for, say, age perhaps and political party. Or there are other ideas. Certain groups may need particular consideration for certain projects. If an area, as in that Vancouver, B.C. example, you know, a particular local area is being affected, well, then they created sort of a, you know, percentages in the panel that they felt like should be sort of quotas for local folks versus like the city as a whole. And that may be necessary sometimes. And consider a larger panel that can deal with some issues of tokenization and also external stakeholder integration to get folks who may be in interest groups or other, you know, folks who need a voice present in the room, get their voice represented without necessarily having them as individuals at the table. Sort of like in a jury process in the courtroom, in that you have lots of witnesses and the lawyers there and people, but there is a, well, theoretically random jury who is sort of external to the issue, who is making sort of a judgment on the issue when it comes down to a decision. So let's talk just for a second about impact. We have the most data on the citizens' initiative review. It's possibly the most studied deliberative process in current existence. In Oregon, and I should say independently studied, this was not by us, we were just very lucky to have a group of researchers who've kind of followed it for the last decade. In Oregon, 40% of voters read the CIR citizen statements, and of those, 60% find it useful. That turns out to be about a quarter of voters finding it useful every election cycle that it's printed in the voters' pamphlet. And you can see that's fairly consistent across, well, three different years of polling. That 10 years of CIR research was done, as I mentioned, by a third-party group of researchers headed by John Gastel at Penn State University. You can find, his research is all public, it's not behind a paywall or anything, just on the website if you search for CIR Research Project. And he and his collaborator Katie Knoblock at Colorado State have just put out a book called, I think, Hope for Democracy, or something like that. It has a very, very grandiose title, but is about the CIR and its model for democratic innovation. Key findings of all of these research reports are essentially that the CIR is consistent in its accuracy, the statement is, that provides comprehensive information on the ballot measure, and importantly, it's readable to, you know, everyday folks who may not be experts in tax policy or whatever the issue is. And as before, we think the benefits go well beyond the actual result, and so do they. This is an interesting study, actually, by John Gastel as well, but not related to the CIR. This was a study on courtroom juries and their impact on future voting behavior. And you'll see that service on a criminal jury is, has more than twice the impact of even serving on a student council in high school in terms of predictability of future voting activity. So not how you vote, but whether you vote at all. And we think that, we don't know, but we think that should be even stronger for these kind of juries, which are dealing really in-depth with policy issues, which have process attached to them and professional facilitation, which are things that the criminal jury process doesn't have. And finally, just to point out sort of the impact on the participants, as that last graph mentioned, here's a quote. This was voluntarily created by the CIR citizens' panel in Massachusetts in 2016. We don't ask panelists to do this whatsoever, and no other panel has done this, but they wanted to write a joint statement, and part of it says, "Many of us consider the CIR to be our most meaningful experience in politics, and for those of us who have struggled to keep faith in the political system, it helped to restore it." And we certainly hope that that's the experience of every panelist in every one of these panels, be it producing voter information or producing recommendations for a city. And with that, I'll just open it for questions, I guess. Thank you.
Okay. Give us a moment to get our vision back. So commissioners, is there anyone that has a question?
Donald speaking.
Okay. Commissioner Amy.
Hi, Lynn. Thank you so much for coming, and thank you all for your interest. It's a fascinating topic and one that is definitely in need of some attention, frankly. How do we create democracy from where we are today? Because it's really important to us.
Well, thank you.
As our community, we know that participation is one of the founding ideas of the community. That's why many of us live here. And I think, I don't know if you're from Eugene or studied the way we work, but there's a lot of participation here, and that's a good thing. I spent 20 years at the University of Oregon managing a planning process that, one of the cornerstones, was user participation. And our goal was actually to enable the users to participate in the design of their buildings, right? So we thought that was important, and I still believe that, because at the end of the day, the user is the one who's most directly experienced by the built environment. And I think what we're talking about here in terms of policies, it's a very similar thing, right? So who's in a better position to sort of understand that, how it's going to affect them personally, than the citizen that's affecting them, right? So that, I think we can all agree with that. The detail, the difficulty of it, is in how do you create the process that allows the common citizen to become a part in a meaningful way of that decision-making process? They may not make decisions, but they may have to do with making recommendations or something. So I have a lot of thoughts about this, as you can imagine. And you hit upon some of the yes-but things already. The criticism is historically, well, why don't we just let the experts do it? Because they're the experts. And typically, the reasoning is, you know, it won't take us long, it'll be shorter, and it'll be less costly. And so in the 20, 30 years of my experience working with user, that was the number one and number two issues, was why are we doing this and why don't we? So I think your ideas and your processes has sort of brought us a lot of light, a lot of understanding about how we can create that environment where the user really gets to participate and makes a difference. And I think, I have, and I have a whole series of sort of specific questions, but I just wanted to say, you know, right away, I think the idea's a great one. I think the yes-buts you've got. I probably have maybe two or three more, but within that, I'm kind of into the weeds about, well, how is this really going to work? And I don't know, Lisa, how, if you want other people, you want me to go right to the weeds or how you want to do it from there.
Are there any other commissioners that want to jump in? And we can come back around to Commissioner Amy, or, yeah?
I could just go. What's again, because I know no action is requested tonight. I just wanted to express, this is exciting. I think it's great that we're contemplating it. I think it will be a valuable investment, even though, like you said, there's associated costs, I think, because of, I mean, using this as an example and potentially using it again for critical decisions. And what I'm hoping, and you said that you don't necessarily have the metrics to prove, but I'm hoping with a process like this, actually, there's some changes kind of foundationally that can occur in the community. I think it's great. So, yeah. Wonderful.
Thanks.
All right, I'll chime in. Yeah, I think it has some great potential going forward. I, I'm looking at different processes that I've been involved with, in the city, as far as planning and this and that, and can think of several where it would be like, oh, this would have worked great here. I guess one of my questions would be, where is the buy-in from? Because for me, you know, if staff buys into it, that's great. But if the decision-makers aren't bought in to it, then the process isn't going to work, at least in my opinion. And a lot of times, I mean, on a ballot initiative, it's pretty clear, you know, you're getting information out of there. But on some other type of things, where there's political decisions involved, which is, again, I'm thinking at the city of Eugene, the decision-makers have different people tugging at them. And it's not just, unfortunately, it's not just fact-based opinions. It's what are my, what does my constituency have to say? Because we're a Ward-based citizen, you know? And so the constituency in Ward III may be much different than what Ward VII was. And the facts look the same, but if you can't get the political people to buy in. So I guess my question would be, do you have experience with this where that is an experience that you've dealt with?
Yeah, so I'll speak to this sort of Milwaukee example, which that, so that, the issue came from the electeds. So that was very convenient in that case.
Yeah.
And I would say that's fairly common for these kind of processes so far, at least. I mean, you know, our existing political structures are such that, you know, elected officials with constituencies are at the top. So anything with, you know, sort of a pathway to influence, that pathway has to go through them. So having them bought in from the beginning, and, you know, it helped a lot in Milwaukee in that we had an issue that was, that they really didn't want to touch with a 10-foot pole. So, perfect. But, you know, buy-in can come in other ways. And, but it's really important, definitely, that they're evolved from the beginning and are bought into whatever the idea that comes out from the citizen panel. Not necessarily, as you saw in Vancouver, you know, they selected the second-choice option, given a number of other factors and inputs, but they took the panel's recommendation very seriously. And it came with this kind of inherent force because, you know, a lot of people knew about the process, that's key, and a lot of people had gotten this letter and had signed up to, you know, volunteered to possibly participate. So they were under some level of pressure to really take it seriously, and, you know, clearly, they did.
So, again, so I'm going to go back to Vancouver, just because that's the one that I can see having some ties to us. So Vancouver had a transportation issue, you know, how do we build it? We're going through with one of those right now in Eugene, Central Eugene in Motion, where you've got stakeholders from different groups and those types of things. So was the process initiated in Vancouver by staff, or was it initiated by electeds?
Hmm. I believe it was initiated by electeds. I'm not 100% sure on that, but I believe the process, the existing process, I imagine, came through staff and was a traditional planning process, and then kind of got to a point where council realized, ew, we need something else, you know? Let's consider something else. And that was probably staff and electeds together, I imagine.
Okay. Okay. That gives me some more information. Thank you.
Yeah, for sure. By the way, on those slides, I can send them to you later, they're sources, and you can go to the, read the whole report and get a lot more detail.
Commissioner Taylor?
I just wanted to, and maybe I'm the only one that doesn't know this. So do, is this staff-initiated? Is it city council? Are they aware of it? What is that status?
Yeah, that's a great question. So staff originally heard of healthy democracy from our consultant on the housing tools and strategies process, Carrie Bennett, who had studied some of the same kind of processes and topics. So we were referred to healthy democracy as sort of an outfit that could help us think about how to structure that process. And we talked on the phone several times, Lynn gave us some advice about how to try to dip our toe in the water with this way of choosing representative folks to sit on a committee. And some of them who sat on that committee are here watching tonight, so that's gratifying. And what I would love to hear is how we could improve upon that and people's thoughts about that process as we're considering doing it in a more deliberative and more extensive way. We haven't gone to council to present to them about it yet. We're starting with you. This is a very introductory, kind of, this is the idea, could it work here? What do people think about it? But we absolutely need council support if we're going to be using it. If we didn't have it, it would not be worth it. So I appreciate that.
Commissioner Amy, did you want to circle back around to your other questions? And then I'm going to put myself in the queue.
Before you speak up, I'm going to ask you all to bring your microphones uncomfortably close to yourself because it doesn't pick up very well. We can all hear you pretty much. Actually, I'm just speaking for myself. I can hear you all, but on the webcast, it doesn't pick these up particularly well. So just speak into the microphone. Thank you.
Well, I don't know. Commissioner Beeson, did you want to make some?
I do.
Okay, go ahead, Commissioner Beeson.
I'd echo a number of things that have been said. I appreciate the information, appreciate the presentation. I would like to get a copy of the presentation. I'm interested in this. I also, like Commissioner Amy, have some experience in mine in the past, was in some project development, several of which used customer involvement groups that we set up, and some operated over a multi-year period. And I think, recognize, not that I particularly know the detail of how to do it, but also some of the complexity involved in what you're about and what you're trying to accomplish. I found myself, as I read the material, I found myself sort of wanting some more. And I think as this evolves, or as it evolves with you guys, and it begins to get more specific as to how it might be applied, I'd be real interested in, you know, in seeing that. So I took the, you know, the staff memo. I went to your website and looked at that and looked at some of the things that you'd done and found it interesting. I found myself, as I was going through it, kind of applying it to implementation of HB 2001. It was mentioned in the memo a couple of times, so I don't know how, you know, if that was the right or wrong thing to do, but that was kind of where I went. That felt like a fairly complex, multi-year endeavor by the city of Eugene that touched a lot of different parts of the community or would touch them. And I don't need to go too far down that road, but one, a couple, just a couple of reactions out of that. I found myself, and I'm going to be careful, and I want to, I watched your slides and I want to be careful sounding too traditional. I mean, I really appreciate what you're doing. I think there's some good possibilities here. But I kept reacting to the word "random." So I kind of listened to the presentation, I saw the, you know, the "yeah, but" part, and you were addressing some of that. I think at times on some of these, and it depends on what you're trying to do, but say it was HB 2001, I think there is a lot of importance in setting something up like this where you're, the agency is, or the city is going out into the community and making every effort to connect with people who are most affected. And I, you know, I was trying to balance that, what I think is a need, to try to do that in a way and find people who are willing to participate in something like this, who are affected, and balancing that with the random part, the idea of finding a group of people and then bringing them in and having some intensive discussion and training. So I just, I just mentioned that, I'm just, there was kind of a dissonance there for me that, I think also it felt like if, it would be good to be able to review what you're doing if there was a more specific project, you know, where you could really look at, okay, here's how you got, here's the project you want to address, or say it's HB 2001, and what you're, then what would it look like? And going into the detail of all your slides, how you're setting all that up. I'd be really, really interested in that. I'll leave it at that, you know, at this point, but I do, I would have a, you know, appreciate additional discussion or questions, so.
Fabulous. Yeah, can I, if I could go back to your first comment about sort of the random, the dissonance between random and also...
The random. I read that word a number of times.
People who are impacted, yeah. I think that's why I brought in the other examples where they included stakeholder, you know, sort of a, you know, recognition that there are sometimes certain groups that are more affected than others to certain projects.
Yeah.
And that that can be incorporated into this kind of process, but that the sort of randomness, and some people try to avoid that word because it has sort of a negative connotation sometimes, but can produce this sort of sense of, hey, anybody could serve here, they don't have vested interests, they aren't necessarily, you know, folks who are already at the table or, you know, who, you know, who are affected but are not seen by staff or electeds necessarily as affected immediately, you know, that it can provide sort of a, some... You know, that it can provide sort of a, some, I guess, you know, kind of this neutral outside body to kind of look, observe the situation from a 10,000-foot view. But, but you're totally right, that those things are sometimes absolutely both necessary.
Well, it makes sense, you know, if you're wanting to bring in this perspective that isn't traditionally capped, you don't traditionally get. And I get that. Just that it kind of, at the same time, if you're, one of your goals is to, you know, be able to effectively implement a complex policy that you're developing over a period of years that has to be implemented and is going to affect the community, I don't know, there's a certain amount of risk there in my mind of, you know, how you go about setting that up and populating that group, so. Anyway.
Just a quick comment on that. This is really great conversation, because one of our goals in having this and hearing your questions is to help us think what to bring back and propose for a public involvement plan, or a strategy or approach for implementing the House bill. So we don't have that developed yet, but here's some ideas, and what sort of questions do you have? This discussion will help us bring something back to you that's more fleshed out.
Okay, so I have myself in the queue, and then we'll move back around to you, Commissioner Ramey. So I want to say that I think this is a great idea. Having participated in the River Road Santa Clara refinement process, it was very noticeable that a certain section of the community was very engaged in the process, and it was a really robust process, but there were certain voices that were missing in the discussion. And I participated in the Housing Tools and Strategy group, and I thought that was a great process, but was also aware that, I think we had one young adult present throughout the entire process, and maybe one or two, how many renters did we have in that process?
A handful.
A handful, yeah. So I do think that something like this could increase the participation and the type of information and discussion that we're having. I'm really curious, when you talk about, you know, a four-day process, could you paint a little bit of a picture about what that experience is like?
Oh, sure, absolutely. This is getting nicely down into details. Well, it's, these processes are complex. I think the manual for the Milwaukee one is 80 pages long, and the CIR is 150 pages. It's dense material, because, as I mentioned, we want to, you know, do this differently than we've traditionally done committees. We want to use people's time efficiently and effectively, but also provide maximum space for people to deliberate. And that doesn't mean sort of rushing people through, but rather, you know, be responsive to the panel and its needs. So, that said, generally, on day one, there's some introductory stuff. I'll talk about the Milwaukee process, because that's probably the most similar. There were a couple of expert speakers on day one, there was time to review some written briefing materials from city staff, and sort of discuss also the, sort of first set of criteria that the panel was using, which was around what constitutes strong and important information for them to consider. So there's sort of filter for information, and sort of the first filter. And then on day two, there's a lot more evidence, a number of other experts, two other expert panels, diversity of experts in this case. And often, these experts are selected by a separate group, they're never selected by us. We don't want anything to do with that kind of question. We're process, not content. But, but those kind of political decisions need to be made by some other body that has some sort of, I guess, you know, political legitimacy. Anyway, so outside experts, more of them on day two, and then a consideration of the information that had been discovered so far, sort of getting that down to little bits of information that they could parse out and use later. Because those bits of information were going to prove to be the rationales for their future recommendations. So then, there was a hard break sort of between days two and three, when they went into the recommendation, sort of the normative section of the process, away from, we're just in this sort of learning space, no judgment, to, okay, now, let's set some criteria. We kind of know the lay of the land here. What are the criteria on which we're going to make any decision? And then, let's identify all potential alternatives that seem even vaguely reasonable. And then, apply the criteria and the evidence to the alternatives, start to filter based now on that set of criteria, and prioritize and filter down to, in this case, one main recommendation and a couple of minority reports. That turned out to be actually quite similar to the main recommendation. There was a high degree of agreement, actually, on the general form of the recommendation, with some variations. And then, and then day four, it's all about sort of getting the words right and writing this thing, and then presenting it, in that case, directly to city council at the end of the last day. And then, now, it's kind of going into staff research and work, and writing a staff report based on the recommendations, and then it's coming back to council for a series of discussions starting in January. So that's kind of the, I don't know if that flushes it out a little bit more.
Yeah, it does. And is the process open to the public? I mean, is this something that people are meeting privately? Is it open to the public? Are there people observing?
Yes.
Different and different situations?
Yeah, it's been a little bit different in different situations. In this case, I mean, whenever we've run it ourselves, we're adamant that it needs to be a public process. There have been a couple of times when we've done it overseas, actually, and they've said, oh, I don't know if we can do, it's a small town, I don't know if we can have it totally public. So we've adapted to that. But in general, I mean, you know, this was a town of 20,000 people, and it's fully public, nobody was harassed or anything like that. And I should say that that process that I've described is very specific to a very limited kind of single question. A planning process like, you know, HB 2001 with all kinds of other inputs and technical details, will need other, will need other stuff, other public engagement, other stakeholder engagement, other maybe design charrette kind of stuff, other, who knows, other things, other inputs over a longer period of time, some feedback loops with technical staff. So there's more to that than there was to this. But, but that stuff in Milwaukee is kind of included in there.
Okay. So Commissioner Ramey, and then I'll check in with Commissioner Baker, and then we'll go to Commissioner Taylor.
So you used the word "criteria" a few times in your description of the Milwaukee process, and to me, that's one of the real cornerstones of this whole thing. And it depends on what you're trying to do. Some of the criteria are set in code already, but in other cases, the panel themselves, I think I heard you say, might be developing the criteria themselves.
Correct.
Could you talk a little bit, because that seems like really critical? Is the panel allowed to wander as far as they'd like? Or are there boundaries? And how do you manage that?
Well, yeah, this takes different forms. I mean, as you saw in the Vancouver process, they had these kind of half a dozen set criteria, essentially, key factors that the panel had to consider that were set by the previous process. In this case, no, it was wide open. It was, you know, you've heard a bunch of evidence, you know, what is the city that you want to live in look like in terms of this issue? And then, there is a prioritization exercise to sort of get at, okay, what's the, let's do a sort of a straw poll in the room, we've got a bunch of criteria here, you know, let's figure out what's kind of rising to the top, and work in small groups, refine those, combine them together, you know, do some prioritization exercises, and get down to, not eliminating any criteria in that case, actually, that may be necessary in some cases. But in that case, we just prioritized, so that when they were looking at recommendations later, it was sort of part of their material that they were working with. But, you know, okay, here's what we've decided are the top criteria, that's what we're going to, we're going to look for stuff that hits those bullet points, here's the sort of evidence we've collected, da-da-da-da, we're going to look for things that kind of like, that justifies, and then we're going to, we're going to base our recommendation on that. So it wasn't necessary to sort of like, get a hard and fast list, in some cases, it might be.
Can you imagine a process where the process itself actually set the criteria?
Yes.
Where you were using the jury to say, these are our standards, these are our touchstones within, this is what's important to us as a community. Whatever you do, you have to meet these five steps. And then, that part could be ported to someone else, but the jury itself could create, this is what's important to us.
For sure, yeah. As I mentioned, I mean, just visioning alone is sort of a, is sort of a task that could be, you know, kicked to a committee like this. There's a really interesting example in Eastern Belgium right now, that's sort of the, really on the cutting edge of this kind of stuff, where they have a two-stage system, where essentially, they have one randomly selected jury that does the agenda setting. And then, they kick out three different issues per year to separate committees that deal with those issues individually, and then come back to them, and they, you know, follow it through to implementation. So, you know, yeah, absolutely.
Commissioner Baker, did you want to jump into this conversation?
Yeah, I really appreciate it.
If you could pull the microphone a little bit closer, there we go.
I appreciate the, this is a very interesting discussion, and...
Thank you.
And I think it's very appropriate, given the timing. Just wondering, given that your understanding of the complexity of, say, how HB, you know, that we're considering, I mean, there's a challenge setting the, sort of like, the appropriate scope for one of these processes, because you don't want them to be 30 or 40 days, right? You know, you want it, so I'm just wondering how you would take a complicated process like this and try to, you suggested there's this model where you split it up and divide it into two steps. You know, I'm just, just wondering if that, if your reading of the process, would, that would be enough? Or would you have to do something more, given the complexity? You know, the other examples you cited were, they were nice, but they were very clear-cut consideration, something you were considering, you know, an arterial, where, you know, whether it's up or down, or, you know, not wherever it is in the city, but just that it's there, or compensation for city councillors, not the structure of how they operate, or anything like that, so.
Yeah, it's possible it may need to be broken apart, and, you know, yeah, anything is sort of, getting that balance right between, you know, efficient but not too, not trying to be too efficient, you know, not trying to bite off more than we could chew. Yeah, no, that's going to be a, definitely a tricky question. I mean, that Milwaukee process was about $30,000, four days. This is going to be a lot more than that. So, you know, it's way more complicated. It's sort of, in some ways, more similar to maybe that Byron Bay example, that was very open-ended, democratic engagement across the council, you know, they came up with all kinds of different recommendations. But this is, this is more complicated than that, in that there's a technical component in a way that there wasn't in that case. So, so it sort of includes that Vancouver process, plus probably a little bit more. So, yeah, going to have to take place over a much longer period of time with, like, feedback loops. And, you know, there's some, some level of kind of upfront costs that doesn't get duplicated over time, that is, the selection of the, of the committee and the design of the process. But then, the longer the committee is there, of course, you know, if you're paying people, you know, paying staff and all that kind of stuff, costs increase, yeah.
I did want to remind the public that are gathered here with us tonight, that we're inviting people to write questions down on cards that are over on the counter. You can grab a card and a cookie, and...
Or a cookie and a card.
Or a cookie and a card, I skipped the cards, yeah. But if you would like to write a question down, and we do have time, we will try to answer some of those. Commissioner Taylor?
So I, I'm just curious, because if you're trying to have a random selection, have you, do you have data that demonstrates like a four-day process? I'm assuming the payment, so where I'm getting at is truly random, and people being able to represent in more, what I'll call, less flexibility? Single parent, three children, a job, the job's super important, okay, you're paid, check, hopefully, you're getting paid enough to make it a reasonable kind of trade-off. And then, you've got three children, and you've got a four-day commitment. So just kind of talk about what, I mean, why that? And have you seen a great turnout, that that randomness, this actually does allow the flexibility needed to get that diversity? And with the length of, the complexity that we're talking about for this process, I would encourage consideration of those things in order to truly get that randomness, so that people can participate if it's a larger investment. I mean, maybe you do break it out to different groups, so that, if there's clear demarcation, so that you can actually maintain that randomness, especially in groups that have less flexibility or more fragile situation. I say fragile, just because there's a lot going on and there's not a lot of room. Yeah.
Yeah, that's a great, great point, and exactly the reason why we, why we pay folks. Typically, for the CIR, we pay about $150 a day. And in addition to child and elder care, food, transportation reimbursement, and, you know, the rest of that stuff. So that's, that's a substantial investment in the sort of human capital, but it's all based on them. So, so they're the center, they're the highest line item on, in the budget, and that's the way it should be. There, that question of sort of turnout and randomness is absolutely an open one in the field. Those of us who are working in the US, which is basically us and the Jefferson Center right now, are doing this specific kind of thing, I should say, there are lots of people in the deliberative democracy world, that, that we're finding, we get about a 2% to 3% response rate, even with those kind of benefits. Of course, it's benefits, but there's also a lot of time commitment. I mean, in this case, it might not be four straight days at any given point in the process, but it may be several weekends, or, you know, a number of days across several months. So, but, you know, in Canada, they get more like 5%, in Europe, a lot of places, they get 10% or 12%. And we certainly hope that as these things become more utilized, and people see that, you know, the amount of influence that they're able to genuinely have on the political process, that those rates will increase. And there are probably other things we can do to get those rates to increase as well. So very open to that. Yeah.
Commissioner Borowski?
Thank you. Thank you. And I think this kind of goes to staff, and so, the Planning Commission is the, is the goal, one citizen outreach committee for our planning process in the state, or in this city. And we've been struggling with, with public engagement for years. We've set up committees, we've tried to figure out better ways to outreach to people. And I'm really encouraged by this, because just as, just as we're, we dive into the weeds on a lot of planning and legislative things that we recommend to the council, I could see these as being the, you know, the Planning Commission for the Planning Commission, you know? That's kind of what I see it as, as a working group that can bring recommendations to us. We can take them and look at them through our lenses, which are a little bit more fine point with, oh, that's a great recommendation, but this code provision might, you know, not let us do that, so that we can have a more engaged recommendation to our, to the people that we are going forward to. And I'm really intrigued about the idea of getting the people that aren't in the room, okay? Because basically, we're the people who are in the room, and, you know, the people over here are the people that are in the room, and, and are knowledgeable, because we are in the room, but we have a hard time getting hold of the people who aren't in the room. And so, any way that we can find to do that, I'm encouraged for. As far as, as starting this out, I would be, I would be hesitant to start it with something as large as HB 2001, because that one is so charged. I think it could, we could use it, but I don't know if I would want it to be the first one. I think we can try a smaller project to see how it works. I don't know. I just, I would hate to have something like this that could be so positive. Its introductory mission be something that is self-politically charged, and have a, and have a chance of it being derailed because of that part of it, and then cast aside in the future. That would be a concern that I would have with it. Going into a really politically charged environment is a first, first swing at the, at the ball. So maybe, you know, a smaller project that has limited scope, that can show, demonstrate, hey, this might... hey, this might work for 2001 and this is how we can do it. I don't know. That's, those are just some thoughts for staff.
Commissioner Ramey, you had said you had two things previously. Did you want to...
Now, three, but yes. So just quickly to that, Commissioner Borowski and Terry to staff, I think, yes, the whole process is going to be fraught with politics and, and it would be a shame to assign this idea to something that becomes very contentious and therefore this idea gets sort of tainted unfairly. However, there might be some aspect of it. So there might be a way to tip our toes into the process with some piece of the process, Terry, as you're sort of putting it together. I think that in itself could be very helpful as we go forward on this. So now can I have my second question? Okay, sorry. It's all about that, I think what you were calling the first phase and what I would think of as the education of the, so you selected the panel, maybe it's Phase 1B after Phase 1A. You selected the panel, now you're trying to bring them up to speed with their experts. And there's, really, that to me is the genesis of the whole thing. If you can't get the language, the ideas across to the average citizen, what they're, what they're working on, then you lose them and, and you lose the process. And so my question to you is, how does the, it seems that's very important for the staff, the gatekeepers, to become educators. And to become educators in such a way that they are not placing any emphasis on anything that they're, because this panel itself isn't going to be able to pick and choose which, which expert or which idea. So the staff plays this incredibly important gatekeeper role. And that, to me, the whole process is going to live or fail on that one thing right there. And so how, how has your experience been with that? And how, how do you think you could advise us as we go forward on this?
Yeah, that is like, that is a super good, you know, good point. In Milwaukee, they, the staff took a, an exceptionally hands-off approach, which turned out to be, I think, the panel, I should say, thought that that was, that was maybe a little bit too much. They wanted to hear from staff a little bit more and the electeds, actually, in that case, because they were talking about elected pay. And the staff did, did provide this written documentation, but they did that in advance without the, you know, the panel couldn't ask them questions about it or, you know, request certain information. So, and there were some experts presented to the panel who had prior experience with the city of Milwaukee. So there was a bit of additional information from, I don't think the panel, you know, lacked for information, but that said, definitely staff need to be involved. So this really depends on kind of who is, is running the process.
That's what I'm getting at.
Yeah.
Who's not staff with a capital S, but maybe staff with a small s.
Ah, got it.
Who's the teacher? Who's running? Who's the gatekeeper?
Well, we think it's really, really important for there to be, to separate the process and content, as I said. So we focus 100% on, on process. Don't, we don't draft any briefing materials, we don't select the experts, we don't determine what the question should be, we don't do any of that stuff. 100% just hiring the folks in front of the room and, and the small group moderators and, and designing the process. So, yeah, so, and, and, you know, need to have a firewall between us and whoever is providing evidence to the panel, be that city staff or whoever else. And, you know, yeah, and be very transparent about that kind of relationship so that people trust that, no, you know, this is sort of being managed by some kind of entity. And I should say, you know, it doesn't necessarily always have to be an outside entity. It would theoretically be possible to do this within a city by having a separate kind of process team that's walled off from the, the content team. But we think that's, that's an important separation. The other important separation is in evaluation. There needs to be a third-party evaluator, separate from both the process and the content. So, so, yeah, those kind of firewalls hopefully create an environment where, you know, the, the process design and the sort of facilitators, these kind of neutral parliamentarians in front of the room are helping to maintain an, an atmosphere that's, that's conducive to open, critical thinking.
So if I could just follow up just for, in my own experience, several decades, it's impossible to do what you've described, to separate the process and the content. I mean, in some cases, it's not possible because you simply don't have the resource. But secondarily, you just cannot do that. I mean, as a human being, you can't, you have, you're making judgments deciding even what order you're going to present things in. And so what has your experience been?
This is something we work really, really hard on and, and specifically train our facilitators to, to do. You know, for myself, as a sort of process designer, I don't read anything about the issue, I don't care what the issue is, the whole process should be issue agnostic and, and divorced really from, well, of course, it, it has to be designed in a way that accommodates for the complexities of the issue, but not the details of the issue, no. So I think that's, and that's often a, a thing that's, that's quite foreign to our political processes. I mean, I, I, I don't think that we have a lot of situations where, where, you know, we're trying to be that strict about, about putting a fire, of course, it's not 100%, we're all human, you know? But, but whatever safeguards we can put in place to, to kind of protect the, the sanctity of the process, I guess, is, are important.
Commissioner Baker?
Yeah, I, I had just two areas I was going to ask you about, which are more details, but one is, when you first select, I mean, you, I mean, we have a challenge trying to get people in the room that don't, don't usually come to the room. And so when, you know, even in your process, you must have some challenges from self-selection. You send an email, you send a letter, they don't respond or, and the reasons could be many. Even if they were being reimbursed, maybe they couldn't get the time off from their work if it was during a week or what. But the point is, I'm sure you must have, you're, you're working on techniques to do that. The other challenge is, how do you, I mean, you, you isolate the process from the experts, but how do you deal with an, experts if you don't, if you have different experts that have different opinions? You know, then it seems like someone can influence the process by choosing which experts to use or, or not, don't influence the process and allow several experts to participate that might be differing. And that's probably complicating for this, the decision, you know, the, your group because now they have these, you know, completely different maybe opinions in some cases.
Yeah, yeah, absolutely. I mean, that's, that's a major problem in the CIR and sort of the thing that the CIR is meant to be addressing is, you have these pro and con campaigns that are just completely at odds, sometimes just absolutely diametrically opposed facts. And the panel has to sort through and, and try to figure out, you know, what are the fact-facts and what are the less fact-facts? So, and I think they've proven that they do that very well in that context. So of all things the panel does, sorting facts is one of their high, the highest skill, skills. And I forget what your first question was.
First question was about...
Oh, yes.
Engaging people that, you know...
Yes, 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 absolutely. As I mentioned, like, definitely, you know, a major kind of thing that we're all wrestling with. We've, I'll just say, even though we only typically get a 2% or 3% response rate and hopefully more in the future and with other methods, the folks who respond are not generally folks who are involved previously. One, one might expect that, for example, in Milwaukee, I mean, there's nobody, I don't think there was anybody on the panel who'd ever served on a neighborhood association or, or in any other body. I mean, we didn't exclude for those, for that at all, but just still by the, by the sort of two-stage random selection, it gets down to at least some, you know, a selection of folks who, who yes, did self-select, but are generally not involved in, in civic engagement activities previously.
That's very encouraging. That really is, that's...
Commissioner Taylor and then Commissioner Beeson?
I was wondering if we could hear from, if the public has questions as well.
Yeah, I was going to say, I don't really, I'm going to give up mine.
Okay.
I've been seeing a lot of questions, so let's pass it.
Commissioner Beeson, did...
That's okay, if there's a lot of questions.
Okay, great. So I am seeing some of these have been touched on in our conversation, but there, there are two here that address the selection process, considering, have there been groups like this that have included in the pool all residents rather than only those residents who have citizenship? And is there a way to give voice to citizens who are more marginalized and may not appear in voter registration?
Ah, yes. I should have mentioned that right up front. The word citizen is citizen with a small c, like citizen in our place in democracy, nothing to do with legal, legal status necessarily. For the CIR, we do select from the voter registration pool, but for this city process in Milwaukee, the council was adamant they wanted residents 16 and up. So, yeah, we made that happen. We had to actually do a separate selection process of, of high schoolers because we didn't get enough respondents in the first, in the, in the sort of standard mail. So that's, that's the kind of thing that, that might need to happen. Typically, age and educational attainment are the, are the two, especially educational attainment is the lowest of sort of, the hardest category to, to get enough folks in the, in the pool. But, you know, of course, other categories sometimes as well. So, yeah, so, so, so definitely creative selection methods needed sometimes. That said, like, sending out a random mailing worked for 19 out of the 20 panelists and then we selected that last, the second sort of person, teenager in that age bracket in, in a high school.
Are there ever phone calls or door-to-door?
We have not done either of those since I've been there, but that's certainly an option, yes. I mean, I know of groups who have done both of those. Mm-hmm.
Lynn, I have another question here. We have spent a lot of time talking about temporary citizen juries. Can you address the pros and cons of permanent citizen juries?
Oh, gosh, yeah. This is a really exciting kind of new development that's just happened fairly recently. I mentioned the example in Eastern Belgium. That's a basically a parallel parliament to this, this regional parliament. There's a couple of planning-specific examples in Toronto. An organization in Canada called MAS-LBP, M-A-S-S-L-B-P, does a citizens' jury process that's very similar to these and have done for a long time with provincial and federal authorities. And now, like, in the city of Toronto, there are two standing committees that are just there permanently to deal with a variety of issues as they come up. One, I think, is, is, is planning-based at the city and one is at the Metro Rail Authority. So, so that, that's really exciting. Often, these committees rotate over time. I think the one in Belgium, they, a third of the panel gets, gets transferred out every six months or something like that. Of course, this is an invest, a major investment, but it's absolutely being done on a permanent basis. There's a, a great example in Madrid as well, some other examples.
I just add one quick comment, just to let folks here know that city staff don't view this as only having potential benefit to planning projects. We've been talking with our city manager's office staff from both sustainability and human rights and neighborhood involvement about ways that it could help the overall city government, either on a project-by-project basis or in kind of an ongoing fashion.
Great. There's two questions here about buy-in. One is, what's the buy-in been like on the community side? How much respect, deference, support do citizen jury decisions receive? What's the range? And there's another one about how do you encourage elected and staff respect for the process and its results?
Hmm, okay, fair enough. So the public buy-in is a question that I don't think I have enough data to answer yet. We have only done one of these at the, at the city level. Eugene would be very much on the cutting edge in terms of what's being done in the US right now. And in fact, I think it's fair to say that this process in a traditional planning environment like HB 2001 would probably be the first of its kind in the US. That's not to say that there's not a lot, you know, sort of backing that up, they've been doing it elsewhere for a long time. But, but yeah, I don't have, don't have firsthand experience of, of sort of public buy-in, but that's certainly very important. Institutional or sort of elected and, and staff buy-in, I'll just speak to the, our experience in Milwaukee just this fall. We, yeah, we had incredible buy-in from, from them and that was essential. I mean, it's not, not a guarantee that they'll take the recommendation and, and, you know, just straight up pass it, but at one time, it actually seemed like the council wanted to tie its own hands and, and say, you know, if the, if the increase is under $1,000 a person or something like that, we'll pass it straight away. If it's over that, we'll send it directly to voters, it's a referendum. They eventually backed away from that and were like, okay, no, no, well, we want some more, you know, we want to be able to consider this. But I think it showed that, you know, depending on the issue, there can be a high degree of, of buy-in from electeds. And, and certainly there was, I mean, fabulous staff buy-in the whole way. We worked directly with the city manager and, yeah, they're super supportive of it. So that's essential, essential, because the design process doesn't, I mean, you know, we, we are, you know, we need input on, on that. I think it's important to have some kind of neutral outside entity, be it us or whoever, doing the process design, as I mentioned, but, but that's not to say that there shouldn't be, you know, staff involvement and, and even in some cases, public involvement in, in the design process.
So you talked a little bit about keeping the different components walled off. So how and who determines research material, where to look, what to consider, how to vet for accuracy, fact versus opinion, reliability?
Yeah. So, right, in these, in this case, the Milwaukee case and, and probably very similar here, the sort of, there's sort of one authority to some extent on some issues, which is city staff. That said, the panel very much, you know, doesn't necessarily take everything that staff gives them as gospel, that's not their job, but, but it's one input. Who decides, right? So that, that in the Milwaukee case was a negotiation between us and the city in terms of sort of what they were willing to provide. I think in the future, that wasn't the best model. We need, as we do in the CIR, to have a separate outside external sort of advisory body. In the case of the CIR, we have a state commission that tells us what to do, basically. They decide the, the measure that's being reviewed, they just, they oversee the election, the selection of the, of the experts, they contract with a university usually and then they, and then they oversee it and they have veto power. They also oversee the, the selection process. So there's sort of this like kind of outside entity that takes some of the political, some of those political questions. And, and, in these processes, traditionally, there would be some kind of like external advisory body. And theoretically, that body could be randomly selected too, but so far, it, it hasn't been, but it, it tends to be sort of a broad base of existing stakeholders, usually.
Commissioner Taylor?
Yeah, that was my question, I'm just going to piggyback off it because it's, because that's, I mean, it's similar to Commissioner Ramey, is that, you know, obviously, if we're going to invest in this, it'd be great if we set it up for success, right? And make sure, you know, we're making decisions that, obviously using expert examples, et cetera, this is going to be a pilot, so there's some associated risk, I guess, but just making sure that we're thoughtful about it. So that was one of my other concerns. It's exactly that question. So let's say you've got this group, if there's not feedback in terms of, let's say, they come up with two options and both are actually illegal, but there wasn't, you know, or it's not consistent with Envision Eugene, and that's critical because it unravels, or at least they understand, this is inconsistent with this large plan and state process. So then there can be dis, you know, discouragement and a lack of trust in the process because they've invested all this time, yet they weren't given that guidance. So you're, you're kind of str, it's straddling a really fine line because, yes, you want to have a true democracy where there's ability to have an evaluation by this group, yet there is this important need for the trust of the process, that those parameters, even if it's as wide as this, that the parameters are there.
For sure.
So they're not wasting their time and effort. That's discouraging.
That's what I was getting at.
Yeah.
Yeah, absolutely. I mean, actually, in this Milwaukee process, they, at, at one point, they were going to bring in a lawyer on the last day to, to basically work with the panel to ensure that everything, you know, basically they could go straight to referendum if they wanted it to. So that sort of falls into the category, I think, of providing the panel with the resources it needs, the same, the same resources that staff would get if they, you know, needed a legal opinion, well, they should get a legal opinion. And, and, yeah.
Yeah, okay.
That's super important, yeah. And knowing, knowing the whole context and, you know, what's, what's available as options, you're totally right. I mean, it's completely frustrating if, if you don't have everything you need in front of you. And I should say, there, there is more allowance for that over a process like what we're talking about here. about here, over a course of a number of months with, with kind of feedback loops, with potential for inputs from technical staff or legal staff or whoever. Also, in longer term processes, the panel sometimes gets the ability to call its own experts to just decide after the fact, no, we haven't heard, you don't have this person on the list, or you don't have this kind of person on the list, or, or allow the panel to select from a menu of experts, those kind of methods to, to provide more opportunities for the panel to get the information that it wants.
Great.
Yeah.
So this kind of connects to what you were just describing a little bit. What can you say about integrating online citizen engagement before, during, and/or after a citizen jury type event?
Oh, my gosh, that's great. So, yeah, we've experimented with this a few times, and so far, we haven't landed on something that's awesome, but very interested and open to this, this idea. And there's a number of people that we're talking to in the new year who have new ideas of ways to do this better. There's definitely lots of opportunities for the before and after. And in terms of sort of traditional, I'll call them traditional, community engagement inputs, you know, that's definitely like an input that a panel like this may need and, and may have an online component as a, as a, you know, a stakeholder advisory committee of, of some other kind would need. Yeah, we've, we've used them in the past to, to suggest questions to the panels. One, one area where we, where we had outside involvement. It's a little bit difficult because folks, you know, even watching live stream online aren't necessarily there in the room, sort of getting all the stuff that the panel is getting, which is a lot. So, so I'm not sure the panel found those question suggestions very useful in that instance, but that doesn't mean we're, you know, anti-online or anything. We just haven't found quite the right methodology to, to, to sort of intertwine it with the in-room process. Now, after the, the result, that is a, a much sort of clearer way to do potential future engagement, I think, because they're not interacting necessarily with the panel in the room, but rather just, just interacting with the results and sort of taking it to another level or, or providing some kind of additional feedback. So, yeah, no, all that stuff on table, and love to hear from whoever that was who was interested in that.
So thank you very much for the questions from the audience. Please know that all of them will be going to staff. Commissioner Borowski and, John, go ahead.
Thank you. Thank you. I guess one of the things that I would ask is, is about sideboards. And one of the, one of the sideboards that's, that's very important as far as public engagement goes is, is budgetary, okay? Because, you know, I mean, we, we just went through a, a very extensive planning process for our, our E M X corridors. And you go out to people and say, well, what do you want? Well, obviously, they're, everybody's going to want the gold standard, right? If you ask them, what do you want? But there was, you know, you've got to, there are, in this city and in this state, there's budgetary constraints that are a major sideboard on a lot of processes. And so, I mean, how do you put that in there? You know, do you say, okay, you can do this or you can do that? You know, if you, if you want to, if you want this outcome in, in our zero-sum budgeting game, what are you going to take away? And is that part of the process as well?
Yeah, absolutely. I mean, they consider that in Milwaukee for sure. I mean, it had direct budget impacts. I would say this sort of falls into the same category as the question about legal issues, is that if you needed to make a decision, then the panel's probably going to need to make a decision. If anybody else needs it to make, you know, staff needs that kind of input, then there needs to be somebody there that can speak to the budget and answer budget questions. And, and, you know, it's, it's just the same as any other committee considering any other policy decision. So, yeah.
Would just add that for H B 2001, there are some sideboards. There's the law itself and what is in there that the city is required to implement by June 30th, 2022. So there's also a deadline and a consequence if the city doesn't adopt its own code. There is a model code that will be put in place for us. Then some of the other pieces, budget and scope, we typically work through you guys and the council to, to fund the thing that we're talking about. So all really great points that we would have to figure out how to incorporate.
Commissioner Beeson?
It's very interesting discussion. I find myself, as I listen, and I'm really in concurrence and agreement with lots of things I'm hearing in terms of, you know, what some of the questions and issues are. And I've had this sort of desire to want to design the process as we're sitting here. And, you know, a lot of, just, so just a couple, a couple of reactions, not, not getting into design, but I, I would probably, in terms of using a process like this for myself, I, I think in a city like this with H B 2001 as the example, multi-year, complex issue, I think it would be really, my opinion, really important to have some kind of citizen involvement process. I think it almost would go without saying, it would be really important. Having said that, and I'm not, I'm not sure this one would be it, maybe, maybe it is, or maybe it's a variation, but it's, the idea would be to get something set up so that various, whatever you want to call them, the constituency groups or the stakeholders or the affected citizens, everything we've been sitting here talking about, all of the different people in constituencies are, have some representation in the process and are kind of, and have some kind of vehicle going forward to be able to participate, talk about it, provide recommendations and so on. We've talked a little bit about just process and content, and I would agree, it's probably impossible, maybe impossible to do it perfectly. It's probably impossible to keep them separate and, and not getting into design, but I, I would, one of the things that, when you talk about this and you've shown the slides and I looked at some of the stuff on your website, most of the examples are, you, you talk about in terms of a pretty short duration.
Yes.
And we've touched on it and said it a couple of times, but if it was H B 2001, it probably would be, I'm guessing, longer. And so the idea of having, of setting up some form of group that is going to participate and be together for multiple years, to me, you begin to have, early on, have some kind of, where you're, you're spending time together, you know, having some kind, I hate to use this word, team building, but you're going to, you're going to get together, you're going to talk about how you're going to work together and how you're going to set everything it up. And I'm, and that's where I think you talk about the role of staff. You talk about the role of, you talked about facilitator, and I, I use that word, too, some form of kind of independent facilitation to help sort of manage the process. And then all of the technical, whatever that is called, the legal, the public works, whoever it is that has to also be there to answer questions that come up and figure out how that's all set up. Do you, can you talk about that a little bit? You know, in terms of anything that you guys have done, or would something like this be kind of of a scope that's bigger than anything?
Certainly bigger than what we've done, yeah, absolutely. It's not bigger than what anybody's done, that's for sure. We have close relationships with these two organizations that I mentioned that, that would certainly be advising on any project. Maybe they would even be partners. We've been talking with Jefferson Center about coming in together on, on anything of this kind with any city. But, yeah, no, that, those, those details are, are devilish. Yeah, absolutely. I mean...
And we don't need to set it up tonight.
Yeah, right. That's, I don't know how to answer that without starting, going down the road of actually designing the thing, but, yeah. Yeah, no, that's, that's super important to, to, to think about how those, how those inputs work in the most effective way for the panel. The panel gets the information that it wants and needs when it wants and needs it. And that, you know, we, we, we talk about ourselves as kind of the tour guides for the panel. We generally have a staff of five process folks for, for a, a panel like this. Actually, in Milwaukee, when we had six process folks, had me, but I was sort of doing the explaining of what was happening. And then a, a professional facilitator who's worked with us since the beginning of the C I R., who did the large group sort of facilitation for sort of the, the main meat of the facilitation. And then four assistant moderators that broke out into the small groups, and they're in small groups. A lot happens in the small groups because really, a group of even 20 is, is too much to, to have good deliberation at a, at a large table. One of the groups of folks that's often underrepresented and, and, and a little bit forgotten are people who are just shy. So, so, so real, this, the real meat of the democratic work happens at the small groups, we think. So, so, yeah, no, setting up and, and, and training that staff and figuring out where the other folks come into the processes, that's the, that's, that's the business, yeah.
Could you add a little bit about how you're typically funded and what the opportunities might be to partner with the city?
Yeah, sure. So this Milwaukee project was grant-funded by the Sailing Foundation, which is a local Oregon foundation. We've had support from a number, a whole bunch of different Oregon foundations over the years, and then previously from, when the C I R. was new and shiny, from national groups like Democracy Fund. We also get individual donations. And I, I think moving forward, as we're working with cities or other governmental agencies, it'll be vital to have some level of city buy-in. Privately funding this stuff is basically impossible, you know, in perpetuity. So, you know, a one-off thing is, is, is possible to totally privately fund, maybe, but, but being able to have some level of city funds that we could then leverage toward other grant funding is essential. So now what that level of, of city funds is, yeah, I, I don't know right now, but, but some, some city investment that we can then work with the city to, to leverage for private funds.
Commissioner Taylor? And then I'll put myself in the queue.
I'm just curious, so what are your next steps? Because unless this citizen jury is actually the, chosen to actually decide what the process is, which could be a part of it, so it just seems there's a lot of discussion, and I'm excited to hear what are the next steps? What does it look like?
I think from...
Considering it's all up, it's all up in the air. So what do you do? How do you?
It's up in the air. I'm hopeful, hearing the questions that you all had tonight and the input that you had, that we would want to debrief with, debrief with Lynn and ask, you know, talk about how those questions could be answered at the staff level. And that's beyond planning. That includes the folks I mentioned before from the city manager's office. So that's our next step.
Yeah.
So the thing I was curious about, I mean, you already mentioned that you incorporated some of this philosophy into the Housing Tools and Strategies Group. And so I understand the importance of having somebody who's dealing with the process be possibly neutral. You've used the term walled off a couple of times, but I'm also wondering, like, is there the potential for incorporating these practices into the infrastructure that we already have for community engagement?
Can I take a first stab at that? Yeah, that's super exciting. What is particularly exciting about, about working with you all is that we feel like the future of this is really working, you know, taking the existing infrastructure, of which there is a lot, and there's a lot of good public engagement work happening right now, and just inserting this where it may be useful. And, and, and the only way this is going to scale is by us, you know, not doing it every time. So, I mean, we're an educational nonprofit, we're not a consulting firm, so our mission is to, to, you know, spread the message or whatever, not to make work for ourselves. So, so, you know, yeah, making a sustainable way for this to happen within the city would be unbelievable, yeah.
Did you, did you want to say anything about that?
That would be awesome. Yeah.
Great. Commissioner Borowski?
Yeah, I, I would love to see this, this project, this move forward. And I think that if staff could convey, I, I think that's the sentiment around the table. I mean, we could go around and give thumbs up, thumbs down, or whatever. But we've had, we've had a lot, the, the staff has had a lot on this plate in, in planning and development over the last few years, and staff turnover and staff, just the number of projects that have been thrown on them. So we have had to go out and, and hire consultants and hire temporary, you know, people to come in and do projects. I think this would be an absolutely appropriate use of that type of, of resources as far as money-wise and utilizing the, you know, the resource that you could bring to the table to help us get to that next level, so our staff can do it on the next level. And we can use it as smaller projects, you know, small project teams could be put together and maybe just bring in a facilitator or two, which would be nominal in, in price as opposed to, you know, the whole big picture. So I'm, I'm very looking forward to some sort of a, a project with this.
Awesome, thanks.
Commissioner Beeson?
I'd want to, I, I don't want to repeat a bunch of things I said, but I also would like to see it go forward. I think it's a, I think it's a very good idea. I'm also, one thing I think I tried to say earlier, I think I, what I saw in the written material is that there's some work going on to develop a project plan, for lack of a better term, some sort of a plan for implementation of H B 2001.
Right, yes.
And I, for me, what would be good is, is, you know, thinking about this, everything you've got in your slides and so on, overlaid on a, a project plan that the staff split together, at least kind of a first blush or a first cut at it, and see how it, you know, might integrate and how it might work. I think that could be really helpful. So...
Commissioner Baker?
Yeah, I, I, I think this is, and it's exciting, really, but I think also, if we were to do this, this, on this project, I think it would be very helpful to have people that are very experienced with it participating, not just trying to take the information that they've provided us here or through correspondence or whatever, because you, you really, you learn by making mistakes. So we, we, it's better that they've made mistakes and we don't have to make them again. So that, that's, that would just be my suggestion, that we, if we are going to, it, it would be more valuable to have the, the quote, "experts on separating the process," participating on this one rather than trying to extract their, their expertise as information and doing it with our own staff. I just think that at least the first time through, it's better to watch and participate in a sort of a secondary role rather than in the, maybe in the primary role.
Commissioner Taylor?
So professionally, we do a lot of co-integral design work, for instance, with, you know, prime architects and a local architect, for instance, and the prime could be coming from a different state. So they have a portfolio, so essentially the expert of a certain type of architecture, for instance. And then the local people obviously provide tremendous expertise on the local context. So I'm not sure I'd undervalue what local, meaning U.S. Oregon-based, has to bring. So just being careful that the expert in Australia has an expertise, but guess what they're missing? They're missing U.S. Oregon Eugene. So I think you're a partnership with an organization that has the experience to provide kind of that context of successful process that is at this scale is great. I just wanted to piggyback off what Commissioner Baker said, that there's a lot of models that I, I think I just, I, I don't necessarily think, just because you're successful somewhere else in the world, to undermine the, the expertise that you bring to the table based on your local expertise. So I just wanted to offer that.
Thanks, yeah.
Commissioner Amy?
Well, I can just reiterate what I said to begin with, that we're a community that values participation. So any way that we can make that go better, we should all support. So whether this is that, I don't know, but it sounds pretty interesting, and I'd like to see it fleshed out within that framework of Eugene and how, using Terry and her staff and her expertise, how could we leverage both the local need and knowledge with this new idea to get the best result for us and the problem that faces us today? And I think there's some solutions here. I'd like to see you try them.
Thanks.
I agree. I agree.
Yeah, and, and I, I hark back to something that I keep hearing when I go to the city council and, and public process is brought up. And we have a, a city councillor who's been on the city council for a number of years, Commissioner Taylor. And she hearkens back to the Citizen Involvement Committee that the city of Eugene used to have. And it kind of sounds to me like what you described, and I don't know which municipality or which country it was, where they had kind of a standing jury for city type of issues. You know, I think that that, if it was a diverse, a diverse pulled out, you know, not the people in the room, but, you know, that was, was pulled out and, you know, rotated through or whatever, and non-political, just, you know, pulling the, figure out what the demographic group you want to pull that from was, there's a ton of, of issues that, that's throughout the departments, you know, whether it's transportation, whether it's planning, whether it's budgetary, that could get thrown to that thing. And then those committees that are dealing with it could use those recommendations. So if, if this works out, that could be a way to reenact that type of a Citizen Involvement Committee. I, I think it has great potential.
Commissioner Taylor?
Sorry, I just want to throw this out there because I'm not sure it's been clearly mentioned, just so the audience that's not sitting here. It doesn't mean this process takes the place of citizen involvement. So I just, I just want to make sure that's clear, is that it doesn't mean having a citizen jury means that people that want to attend a larger public process, that it's still going to be as robust and we're going to still work on that component of citizen involvement.
Sure, yeah, that's an important thing to mention. I mean, it's, it's, you know, sometimes people say, well, you're excluding folks who, who voluntarily, you know, want to participate, want to be there for the purpose of sort of randomly selecting folks that, you know, they didn't, they didn't volunteer, they didn't, you know, they didn't want to be there, they had to get a letter or whatever. And, and our response is, not, not at all. No, it's not a substitute for any other kind of political engagement necessarily.
Or none, just what about the 300?
Sure.
300 people attending a public event?
Sure.
It's the gamut.
Yeah, I mean, that's all, that's a really, really important input. I mean, that's, and folks in, in other interest groups or stakeholder groups are absolutely vital to providing the panel the information that it needs. We just think that they shouldn't necessarily be at the end of the line in terms of making a recommendation. That's, that's it.
Great. Commissioner Baker?
Now, I was going to also suggest that maybe we, you should be put in touch with some other departments at the city. I'm particularly thinking back to some recent events that I've attended, like Public Works is, is revamping a bunch of bicycle paths, and, and they have two or three different proposals and, you know, they're very elaborate. And people come, but the people that show up are obviously mostly bicyclists, maybe a few drivers, maybe a few pedestrians. But this would be an ideal process to parallel what they're already doing to see what happens when you get a more, you know, neutral, you know, a more representative group, you know, reviewing the technical information and the recommendations from other people and seeing what they might, you know, might come up with or, you know, suggest whatever.
Yeah, interesting.
So I'll put myself in the queue. I, I think it's really exciting. I, I mean, I'm, I've, I'm interested in any mechanisms with which we can, in, you know, increase participation, particularly if we're, you know, looking at bringing more voices into the room and more voices to the table. I, I do think we have a, a lot of other robust input processes and, you know, I think we want to make sure that we see this as an enrichment and, like you said, it's not the only thing that's happening, right? And I appreciated the examples that you gave in Byron, Australia, where there were three groups, right? There was the randomly selected citizens, there's the stakeholders, and the council all working together in a process. And, you know, as an educator, I, I often think about what it's like to, this situation makes me think about what it's like to get a new curriculum and, you know, particularly something complex. And you, you don't just implement it like immediately in full form, right? And there, there are going to be trials and errors, and I think if we have a growth mindset, you know, we're going to make mistakes and try things out and get feedback about it. And so, I mean, when we start talking about HB 2001, that is an incredibly complex and huge process, and I would encourage us to find some components of that, that we might use this to enrich the process, but that we, you know, we continue to use a lot of the other great, robust types of engagement that we've been using. And I, I am guessing that is what staff has been thinking, so. Are there any other commissioners who would like to make a final comment? Okay, so I'll turn it over to staff, Alice, is there anything that we need to be thinking about in terms of our next meetings or...
Your next meeting is Monday, the 30th. I believe it's at 5:30, and you're going to have two land use, there's not going to be a public hearing, that was what was originally scheduled, but there are two land use-related topics that night. And then you won't have any meetings, we don't even have anything on the schedule, I think, until late January at this point. I think there's a couple of meetings in early January that will probably go away because we didn't have, we, we didn't need to schedule an appeal. We'll send a new one out to you real soon.
Great. And, Alice, I was wondering if you might like to mention your recent change in assignment?
Yes, well, I am, yes, I am sitting, although I'm not officially the acting capacity planning director until January 3rd. However, for this month of December, I think it's mostly me with a little bit of Terry and a few other staff thrown in during the vacation time. But yes, so for the next year, I will be the interim planning director, and I'm excited about that.
Great, congratulations, yeah. Commissioner Baker, did you have a question?
I just had to clarify, I was, so, you know, we recently received the proposed meeting agendas, so is the topic suggested, listed in that agenda for the 30th changed, the Lombard apartments?
Nope, that's correct. So there's a remand on Lombard apartments from the Land Use Board of Appeals, and then there's a procedural matter, and I'm not, I actually was, I've been out of town the last couple of days, so I didn't see what went out, but there's a procedural matter related to another land use application. So those are both on that night, but neither of them are public hearings.
Okay, yeah, no, I just, when you said it was changed, I wasn't quite sure.
Oh, no, so that one's fine. We originally had that date held for a potential public hearing, and that is not happening, but the meeting is still being held.
Commissioner Borowski?
So I guess it just goes to those, are they complex ones? Because if they are, the sooner that you can get us the information out, the better, just for me, especially on these, these appeals and these remands, because sometimes it takes me a while to...
No, I completely understand. I think one of them is definitely, I never want to say they're not complex because they're land use, but I think in the scheme of what you've seen, one of them will certainly be a fairly traditional, more routine one. The other one, we will have the attorneys working on information to provide to you. It's, it is a little bit more, it's more unique, which I think makes it complex.
Okay.
So, and I wish I could provide you more, but I don't necessarily have more information. But I, we will keep that in mind and try to get you information as, as soon as we can. The good news is, for the Lombard remand, that has been really winnowed down in terms of what the topic is about. It's down to one, one issue that doesn't require the record being reopened. And then the other one is a procedural matter that, like I said, is, is fairly unique. I do not believe that's going to require you to look at the entire record either, so, but the staff report will be, will provide you some good information in there.
And, and one other thing, just kind of dovetailing on when we had our retreat and we talked about some of the priorities that we were looking for, for the Planning Commission, and seeing months on end where, where we aren't, aren't meeting, I think there was a consensus, at least I heard at our, at our retreat, that, you know, the Planning Commission would like to get more involved in some of the core goals that are written in our things, such as, you know, the housing issues and stuff like that. So I'm just wondering, I'm not saying put it out here right now, but I heard that from some of the other commissioners, and I, I think it would be nice if we had an opportunity, maybe just to have a Planning Commission meeting that is, you know, goal-oriented, what do we want to accomplish other than going through, you know, being a little bit more proactive as opposed to reactive? That's, that was one of the things I heard at our, our retreat, and I just want to keep pushing that.
Commissioner Taylor?
So I just, I know there was a, that was brought up, and there also was another part of the discussion, and that is that staff, right, right now, every time we add a meeting, that staff needs to be present. So we're, we're right now balancing, although we're not meeting regularly, they're inundated. We saw their schedules. So that was part of the discussion. So I'm not, just keeping in mind, it's not that because we have breaks that there isn't a lot of work being done, and we don't necessarily have those allocation of resources to have them present at, for some of those meetings. So just keeping that in mind, I think, so that was part of the discussion, just to round it out. So I still think it's good to bring up. I don't, there wasn't resolution, is my memory. It was just a recognition that this is, there's a lot of work in front of, not only, I mean, obviously staff, but it's all going to come to us. So in some ways, what we were, at least what I heard, is that when there's opportunities to, like if there's one small agenda item, then adding some of what you're talking about is that more proactive brainstorming, but just keeping in mind the reality of our schedule. So I think that's what I heard, not the, let's add meetings to add to that schedule. So I just wanted to throw that in.
And I just wanted to just, I brought it up just to, so that it's still front, front and center in, in staff's mind, especially with transition of staff.
No, I appreciate that.
Okay, I am going to adjourn the Planning Commission meeting.
Thanks, everybody.
Thank you.